Commander, I would end up the next example made. I will not volunteer my time and risk my life just to know that I have no support of the people that are supposed to be my leaders. Members of this board think this is acceptable to have another team cover calls 28 minutes away, and therefore it's not considered an emergency. The first call they requested took no fault to the Multrip County Dive Team, one hour and five minutes to arrive on scene. Politics were placed above public safety. This is not acceptable. I have read several press releases by Mr. Ross that state the dive team does not have proper insurance because they were not properly formed. Mr. Ross wants us to believe this is just a coincidence at 36 hours after being embarrassed or in his words attacked because the team showed up to support the commander. This just randomly came to light. Per Mr. Ross, the dive team had to be shut down due to lack of insurance and lack of formation paperwork for our protection. I am told the same documents are missing for the Shelby County Rescue, yet they have been not ordered to stand down or issue is fixed. Why? Let me be clear, I am not now, nor would I ever ask another emergency service to stand down. Why is the same issue that was caused us to shut down, not them? You need to ask yourselves these questions. When did the request for insurance clarification take place by Mr. Ross? Insurance questions were asked and answered on a March 14th Legislative Committee. What changed? Did the new investigation into the dive team start June 21st? How does one board member get to stand down an entire emergency service? What's next? Disagree with the sheriff and stand down his department? How can this even happen without a board vote? I would like to state that I have complete confidence, respect, faith in the leadership, skills, decisions, the ability of our commander, Austin Pritchard Jr. I stand behind him on any of his decisions, unlike members of this board. If a decision was made that did not align with your beliefs or opinions, it should have been discussed with the commander, not on social media or publicized with the Agger County Watch Dogs. Have a discussion like adults, change or remove language you disagree with, do not start a personal vendetta to get your way. This isn't a dictatorship, it's democracy. As the administrative commander, I hereby officially render my immediate resignation as an apparent thi-
Resign! Or we'll lose more!
If you were them. What's your choice? If you were them.
They're gonna keep coming.
What's your plan? Stop now!
They're still coming!
You're gonna lose the ball.
Step down!
Come on, son, you're making it out of yourself.
You're hurting our community!
Shame on you!
Step down! Do something about this, Mr. Orman!
They're gonna keep coming.
Do something for the public one time.
What? What was that you said?
Yeah, what was that?
Can you please repeat that?
I said if people threaten to quit, let them quit.
Really?
Are you kidding me? You guys are the terrorists! You're the terrorists! Get off our community!
You don't even live here!
You're not wanted!
After a tenure of 23 years and an untarnished reputation serving Shelby County, I Scott Robert Anka, hereby tender my resignation from Shelby County Dive Team. I'm not compelled to continue to volunteer, given the current climate with the local county government. I am deeply saddened and feel forced to make this decision. It's been my pleasure serving the citizens and visitors of Shelby County alongside my teammates and command staff, which are all of the utmost quality. I would like to thank all the supporters of the dive team, of which there are many, for all that was provided for the team throughout the years.
All these people, Bobby, do something!
Currently Dive 6, I've been with the dive team for eight years. To the citizens of Shelby County, I've had the pleasure of serving you for over seven years. Being on this team has given me a sense of belonging in this community. However, tonight, I officially resign my position on the Shelby County Dive Team effective immediately. It has been through the actions of select board members and broken trust-
How to resign him, Bobby? Bobby, what are you gonna do?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Sean Dial, and I'm entering my resignation letter. Here is Shelby County Board, I am writing this letter to inform you to resign from the Shelby County Dive Team effective immediately. Over the past several months, the unprofessional attacks, social media messages, and conversations conducted from the head trustee and board members towards the commander and dive team members are unacceptable. An unfounded attack on one member is an attack on the entire team. It is for this reason I am no longer a member of this dive team. I'd like to take this moment to thank the dive team members, especially the commander, for giving me the opportunity to be a part of such a strong and dedicated team.
Resign. Step down. This entire community-
Destroying this! We aren't gonna have a team left!
Clearly don't care.
Shame on you!
You guys don't need water rescue.
Where's your first call gonna be? Where's it gonna be? Rescue.
Good lord, what are you guys doing? What are you letting happen?
Do you have children that go in the water?
This is unbelievable, how can you let this happen?
Chris, we reinstated him.
How can you let this happen? They're asking for him to step down. Is he more important than the community?
I understand that they want him gone!
And he should go today!
And so do you!
Brian Henze, recently retired divee. My replacement will be up next. I left this county 30 days ago due to a personal situation for my family. I spent two decades on this team. If you notice, my shirt is not the same color as theirs. This is my commemorative shirt for retiring from this team. I was the man that was on the other end of the line when this guy was trapped in the river, and I heard his screams for help. I saw his safety diver sitting there with wide eyes. I gave hand signals to not upset this man and keep my voice calm. I was later told, not by him, but by another diver, it was my com- -through a wonderful extended family of mine. That is a terrible reminder. I will take my good memories and I will keep them up here. Thank you.
Mission out, sort of. To whom it may concern- ...some of the current board members. It pains me to stand here in front of the community and read this letter to the public of Shelby County. Because the team and I have poured numerous hours being away from our families and friends to help this community in a dire time of need. It is sickening to sit by and watch the way most of this county board is handling themselves with this predicament that was created. I have always dreamt of wanting to help other people and communities ever since I was introduced to a volunteer emergency group at a very young age. And to have a county board crush a dream of mine all because of an issue that ceased to even exist, with that statement, I would strongly urge that Mr. Sonny Ross be removed from the county board due to his lack of professionalism and bullying mentality. To the public of Shelby County and surrounding counties that previously had a mutual aid agreement, I apologize for having to resign, but the faith and trust of the board as a whole is no longer there. Resign. In the recent attacks towards the Shelby County Dive Team, it seems some select members of the board are ones who are running rogue in not the dive team. Today, I am putting in my resignation as a member of the Shelby County Dive Team. To the citizens of this great county, it was a pleasure serving you. Dive 9 out.
Bobby, do something!
Do what you know is right.
You're gonna be next!
Do you care? Do you care?
No, he don't care. No answer.
Hello, my name is Sandy McCarron. I've had the pleasure and honor to serve on the Shelby County Dive Team as a shore responder and EMT, along with some of the most dedicated men and women, for the last 10 years under the command of Austin Pritchard and Scott Anka. During those years, we worked, trained, cried, laughed, and teased amongst each other, but more importantly, we became a family. While respectfully serving the citizens of Shelby County and the surrounding communities. Mr. Ross, I've seen- ...so I have to ask, does it taste like vinegar when you speak them? I find it hard to believe that a man of faith can possess vindictiveness and spitefulness that has been clearly shown towards our dive team, our commander, our families. You seem to like to talk the talk, but clearly don't possess the ability to walk the block to the board. I hope he will soon come to realize how much experience and knowledge that's walking away tonight. The experience and knowledge that can't be gone out and brought back into having a successful team immediately. It takes years to build a team, and our team is hands down one of the best. Just ask our supporters behind us. As of tonight, I hereby offer up my resignation to the Shelby County Board from Shelby County Dive Team. So imparting, Mr. Ross, I have a quote scripture that I would like to share that is one of my favorites, as it speaks to my heart, and I'm sure the first responders that are here tonight with us. Then I heard the voice of the Lord saying, "Who in Shelby City, and who will go for us?" And I said, "Here, send me." Mr. Ross, who do you want to send?
How does the board just sit there and let this happen? That's right. That was one of the-
You're a kid!
Sam David Haynes. You're wearing it forever. Since 10 days after I graduated high school, all I've done is give my life to everything. To service no matter where I'm at. I've done my country, I've done my community, I don't know, for the last 20 some years. It pains me that we are led to this. I'd like to tender my resignation from the Shelby County Dive Team immediately.
Eight years in the military. Five active, three reserve. Been to places probably none of you would ever like to go to. Afghanistan. Flew in three days after Hurricane Katrina into that chaos. And this has been my family for the past seven years. And now, a single individual has destroyed this family. I'm Craig Martin, I submit my resignation to Shelby County Dive Team.
No more, way to go!
Okay, so I have this paper typed out, I ain't even made this work. This has just been ridiculous, man, this ain't high school, you guys could have done this shit a whole different way. I've been on since 2017, he's been like a second deputy. And you guys managed to piss it all away in a matter of three weeks. I think he needs to go, forget, no questions asked, but as of tonight, I'm putting in my resignation.
Mr. Fix.
See what Paul and those guys got you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's obvious that what the citizenry here thinks should happen, I'm asking that Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ross, and the whole board collectively consider, Mr. Ross has the ability to withdraw himself from this committee, not the board, just for this committee. What's the particular? In particular, why the interest in staying on the committee? It's obvious that Mr. Ross has chosen his self and his image and ego over the lives of 3 million people. He's made that choice right here. He can stop this, he can stop these resignations. I'm confident they all would come back. And Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Ross is not willing to make that decision, as you know, Mr. Chairman, you have the right to make committee reassignments. You can choose the safety of 3 million people right now, you can choose that. Yes, it'll irritate some people, and some of us will get written up in social media, but it's the people, it's 3 million lives, and Mr. Ross is standing firm for his position at the expense of 3 million lives, that doesn't make sense. And to the board, you collectively can look to your chairman and look to Mr. Ross and express your feelings. If you agree with the citizenry that Mr. Ross should be reassigned to a different committee so the dive team can come back, you can certainly make that strong recommendation to Mr. Orman or to Mr. Ross personally. So we ask you as a citizenry, please speak individually and collectively, all of you board members. I don't think any of you are wanting to see what's happening here. I doubt any of you want this destruction. So please speak individually, collectively now. We'll stop and be silent. Speak individually and collectively to your chairman. Tell him that's what you want to happen. Tell Mr. Ross that's what you want to happen. I think that will have impact. I think that will give a strong possibility that we can rectify this mess and put the dive team back together. But you all need to sound off. You know what the citizens say. We need you to sound off. Mr. Orman can, as chairman, only listen and not act. He doesn't have to act, that's right. He doesn't have to do what we're requesting. Mr. Ross doesn't have to do what we're requesting. But if you all say that we want this done as part of the leadership of the board, then that would have great impact. So please, no more resignations. Please, somebody there, some individual, some group, speak up.
Come on, Dave, please! Say something!
Please, give a response, Mr. Fix. There's nothing on the agenda about any sort of committee adjustments or anything like that. For me to do something, you say for me to do something, I'll time out. I'm giving a response to the statements of Mr. Fix. As it stands currently, the board just passed a resolution that puts seven members of this board in an oversight position to work with the dive team. That's six other members. With that said, how many of those six members are fully coherent with the start and finish of the situation that started in January?
What situation do you- For board, you should know, all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, I do appreciate the response.
So we have a full committee that would encompass public safety, and we have the knowledge base to work through it. Now, as that said, in the vote of the board, Mr. Ross also affirmatively voted for this resolution in support of the dive team, and through that vote openly put forth the mentality that he's willing to work with the dive team.
Of course he did. He goes to the end of the stick, starts with by shutting them down when it wasn't legal. So of course he's back now and wants to try to get the dive team on their side, but it's too late on that one. It is way too late. You don't have a-
You can picture it right now!
I'm trying to be apologizing to the other dive members for why he put them through.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, hopefully your board members might speak to you, give you their thoughts.
He's trying to, he's been trying to. Can I speak?
No.
I would just like to make a comment. Can I ask you, please? I'm sorry. Yes, because you are the leader of this board. You can make a decision. Make a tough decision, that's what leaders do. If you want this man to step down, by God, tell him to step down. You just let however many dive members walk away and resign and put the lives of millions of people at risk. As a leader, you have to make tough decisions sometimes. And that includes asking Mr. Ross to step down. Sorry, that's my opinion. I've been through formal leadership training. I've made tough decisions. I've had to fire employees. You're the leader of this county board, make a tough decision.
What was your name?
Why do I have to give it? Because if I give it, you know what's gonna happen? Your little watchdogs will come after me.
Don't give it. Don't give it.
I want to- Unfortunately, I prefer not to give my name, because I'm an employee, and I've learned what happens to employees when they speak up. The watchdogs come after them. I prefer not to give my name.
Hey, there is a- Shouldn't be a-
Whistleblower policy? You know how much faith I have in that? None! I don't want the watchdogs coming after me, so I prefer not to give my name. I'm sorry, I have no faith in this at this time. I have no faith, I still don't have faith that these watchdogs won't watch me walk out to my car and start harassing me. That's how much faith I have, I'm sorry.
The dogs go home! The dogs go home!
It's not funny!
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, hey, what's the question? I may have lost count of 12. Give or take. To include Mark and his many years of service. Tonight didn't start off on the path for any of this to be resolved. Through some discussion, if that's what you want to call it, and even some compromise, we were able to come up with a document that could at least create the formation and put the dive team on a foot. The intent is to get them back to work. Now, I've never been a part of the process like this or a dive team, but I've been a member of the team. As the gentleman mentioned, 29 years of military service, you tend to understand what this sense of family is for these folks. If you're not taking that in right now, you're missing something. If you're not taking in the fact that we just let 12 members walk out this door, and our intent to put them back out to work on active duty as stated earlier, the vote has been missed. And we may not be able to take action tonight for their request, but we have the option to take action. We took action here in a best faith effort to make a compromise to fix the issues that were brought up in January. Those issues have been fixed. We have a 60-day timeframe to try to get all the other regulations and the rules and the SOPs and the things tightened up together, and I don't think it'll take that long because there's no doubt that these things are put together well by our current command structure. Now, by my math, we still have some of the command structure in place. One. That we have a choice here, and they have a choice on where this goes from here. But do not mistake what these folks are saying and what this team just did. Do not mistake it for people just wanting to quit. They don't want to quit. They did not come here to quit. They came here to continue to do their job. They still have an opinion, and they still feel that they can't work with certain members. That needs to be addressed. And it's our job as leaders to make sure that this happens one way or the other, right? Now, I can't- I can't force them to come back. I can only appeal to their senses, but we have actions to take before that's gonna happen. I don't know where this goes from here, but I do know that I'm not gonna go to bed tonight, sleeping any easier than I did yesterday. It's gonna be a very rough go for a few days. I don't think that these folks are gonna have any easier path. I just ask that you consider the recommendations that are put forth, and we take some action to get these folks back to work.
Somebody back on there.
Mr. Ross, I'll ask you one more time.
Speak, board, speak.
Speak.
Please.
Okay, I have been on this committee, this board, from the last board to this board. I have been on the dive team committee and been with these guys one Monday night every month since I've been on the board even. I was in hopes that what we did with this resolution would be enough to keep everybody together. I was fearful that it wouldn't be, but I was in hopes that it would. I hope that you are listening to what these people say and know how important this group of people are for this county. And you have an ability to do something. I'm not saying that he has to resign, but he doesn't have to be on this committee, and you have that authority to do that. And the other night, I was called upon to quit too, because I was part of that committee too. If you guys all want me to leave public safety, I will leave too, and you can have two new members. If that's what it takes to get it resolved, I will get off that committee too. But this needs to be resolved, it needs to be resolved now. We don't need to go- ...without these guys working. I believe they've already said everything that I would want to say. I do want to say that Saturday night when they got the call, I was teared up because I'm thinking, there's somebody at the river that's gonna drown, and we have nobody that can go down there. Every day since Saturday, I see these guys, I'm in tears, because we don't have anybody that can help our county. Something can be done right now to get them back. We're gonna lose more people. We won't have a dive team. John Summers explained the whole thing perfectly, and I thank you, John, for coming tonight. And I agree with Teresa. Remove Sonny from that committee, I think that's what will help. I was thankful that we got through this resolution, thought it was gonna work, you know, I was all for it, but that wasn't enough. You can take care of it, Bob.
Somebody come in.
I got one.
Sorry, Ken.
I'll wait. I mirror what they have said. We need a dive team, and I can understand why they don't want to work whenever they're not sure about the command structure and the people above them. I think it's within your power, Bob, to go ahead and take him off of this, just this committee, you know?
That's what I thought.
I think that's law to have.
I hear you, I'm listening, honestly, I am.
Do it, do it!
I'm not gonna do it now.
Why not?
I'm sorry. I hear you.
Take him up.
I know.
Would you guys give us a little bit of time to work through this? Bobby's saying he can't do it, let's. Let's, give us time, work with us. We really are trying in good faith to keep you guys together. We want to see us together. And before you all walk out and everything, please let us have some time to work this out. We've just got to. We've got to go back, you can go back to work today. I understand what you're saying about Sonny. Maybe stuff does need to be done, but it can't be done tonight. So please, please, okay, you can step down. It ain't gonna go tonight, so please, give us some time to work this out. And I think everybody's gonna be satisfied with what comes out of this. Please don't walk out in anger and, and give us some time. There's too much experience here, you guys have too value here to walk out. You know, you know you, you guys ain't gonna be replaced. You know you can't be replaced. Scott, you've been doing this as long as I've known you.
Point three years.
I mean, give us some time. Don't walk out. We, we are trying to do this the right legal way, so please, Austin, just take your guys and give us some time, please. All I have to do is resign. To give us some time to work through this, and we'll get it worked out. That's all I got.
Austin, I'm, I don't, I'm public body comment, I'm supposed to speak to the board or the body or whatever. Austin, I have talked to you multiple times throughout this whole thing, and I have been honest with you, I have not kept anything from you, I have not lied to you.
Oh, my.
No, she has not, she has been great.
Can we please show respect? You've been amazing, Julie. You've called me.
And I understand, and I have said it myself, as someone who works in a crisis situation, you have to depend 100% on your leader. And I know these men feel, they believe that you're their leader, I, I've, they've demonstrated it, I see it. But like Britt said, we took the first step tonight to try to fix the resolution so that you guys continue operating as you have. We, we respect that, we recognize the, the situation that we're in. And I am again asking that, it's, it's a very hard thing to be standing in the limelight with all this pressure. I know, I mean, I, I'm watching it, I see it, I feel it.
And that's what Austin's had.
I understand, I have reached out and talked to him about it.
But it's not been you.
But it is because when you say the whole board, you're talking about all of us.
We did not say that.
Anyway, anyway, I'm asking you to, as I have extended grace to you, I'm asking you to extend that grace back to me and give us a little time to work this out where we're not in front of cameras, in front of angry mobs, and just. I'm just asking, I'm just asking for whatever time you can give us.
Julie, you have been fantastic. Say that right. You have called me, you did. The mental abuse and the anguish that has went on in my house, I know. I have sat quiet because I'm a quiet person. I have been the only one standing next to him during phone calls, the only one that's heard it. I'm the only one that's seen him sleep two hours and then get up and turn over documents because somebody's digging for something else. This felt like the witch hunt that everybody keeps talking about, that's what it's felt like. I don't know how county board works, but I know what's right and I know what's not right. I have told him I will not live like this anymore. The whole team has lived like this, we're family. But in my house, you know this, we've talked, this has nothing to do with you, you have been fantastic, you have been honest.
That's not fair.
I under, sometimes things aren't fair. What I should, what we just endured is not fair.
Hasn't been fair to us, there's been three, there's been.
I understand that. This has to do with one person. And it's not for moving here from the board. The interactions that I, he's a volunteer. The interactions that I have witnessed, I'm the only one who witnessed them. I feel like I'm an honest person. There is no reason for me to make anything up. Over a decade of him leaving in the middle of the night and going for people and helping them and missing birthdays, all the things the rest of them did, that sacrifice was worth it. The last three weeks, smear campaign, the things that were posted about him, that was hard, got a thick skin. This last week, these are people's lives. We have been in straight trauma. We have been clawing to keep our own faces above the water. We have children, we're not, this is not a game. It's about one thing. I'm not saying Austin's the easiest guy I always get along with. He's a leader, he is firm, he has shown he has integrity. This all began because he followed the governing document that he had. I think we should be applauding that instead of attacking him for maybe some things aren't right. He did the best that he could. He's had no ill intent. That's what this is about. There are so many board members I know have called him. They checked in, lots. A few of you have went way above and beyond and our family will never forget that. They'll never forget that because you didn't have to. That's what this is about. One person cannot have this much power and abuse over all of these families and my children. That's what this is about.
Mr. Ross, I'll ask you one more time. Will you step down from the Public Safety Committee?
Please, Sonny, step down.
Please. For the governor's community, step down, Sonny. Please. Do what's right, man. It's a yes or no.
Not a yes or no.
Sure it is.
Or your daughter.
Because of the amendments that were made tonight.
No. No. No.
The structure, command, and everything is left intact. And the dive team was, was left intact, functional. As long as you are still in the command spot, none of that changes. If you resign for a ground zero, there's been a tremendous amount of effort put.
You caused emotional distress to that family, and that family.
One at a time, please.
There has been a tremendous amount of effort put forth to bring a resolution, to bring this situation to resolve.
You can end it.
Oh yeah, you step down.
There were insurance issues that. We know it. Port immunity issues prevalent that should have caused you, could have caused you significant harm. If anyone under your command would have been injured. I've expressed all of that to you.
It's too late for this. I have grown up in this community nearly all my life. I've been countless hours enjoying Lake Stillbill and the Cascades area. So naturally, when I had the opportunity to join the Shelby County Dive Team in 2009, I jumped at the chance to serve the citizens of this county. For almost 15 years, it has been my distinct honor and pleasure to serve Shelby County as a diver and 10 years as the commander of the Shelby County Dive Team. Over the past couple of weeks, I have seen how individuals on this board no longer have the county's best interest at heart. They have manufactured this crisis with the dive team to further their narrative and their agenda. The team has over 130 years of combined experience that is not something that can be replaced overnight. I cannot and will not ask this team to endure this toxic environment. I cannot and will not attempt to lead this team while being treated with the complete and utter disrespect I have seen over the past couple of weeks. It is for these reasons I tender my resignation as the commander of the Shelby County Dive Team effective immediately. This decision has not been made lightly. I have spent numerous hours contemplating my decision. To the citizens and taxpayers of this county, thank you for allowing me to serve for the past 15 years.
Not four. One or seven, whatever committee you want, who's here?
We gotta do right. We're concerned about being right.
You know, they, they do put, I ain't gonna even go through it, they go through a lot of training, a lot of hours, a lot of hard work on a volunteer basis. Whether it was a typo, a misunderstanding on the insurance deal, to stand down, whatever happened there, yeah. But we had an actual dive call where there was somebody in the water and they were told to stand down. Mulholland County had to respond from the other end of the lake on a volunteer basis. Then you had the life of a Shelby County officer actually go in the water and make the recovery. Hypothetically, what if both of them, the diver or the deputy and the victim died in that situation? They're not equipped for that kind of training at all. What do you think our finances would have been in the county? So gentleman over there is asking for time. Time is not what you have. What if somebody goes out right now, out on the lake right now, all of a sudden they're over, over the edge of the boat? We ain't got a dive team. We gotta, are you gonna have lives on your conscience? Or are you just gonna sit there like a bump on a log and not do anything? You're gonna let 130 years of experience go out the door. You know why they're so pissed off? Was because their reputation, somebody's, and two other lives were on the line and their hands were tied. And then it come to find out, well, guess what? They did have insurance. Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they did.
I guarantee you Mulholland County was covered to come down here on the same damn insurance. Same umbrella. Sorry, I just think it was wrong. And I think you need to resign.
So, an hour ago, we had a dive team. An hour ago, Sonny, or Austin stood up and asked Sonny to resign. That would have taken care of this whole situation.
Yep.
An hour ago, we had a dive team. Sonny, if you would have had an ounce of.
Integrity.
Integrity in this situation and comprehended what went on here, you would have stepped back and let this team do its job. It was right on the line, right in your lap, he put it in your lap before all this occurred. And all you had to do was be a man, have some integrity, step back for the good of our community, and let it go down. But no, you said, and there's our dive team out in Park.
Shame on you. Yeah, shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I understand your position about not being able to make committee reassignments now. I disagree, but I respect that's your position. What I think you can do is you can look, you are his, you are the leader of Mr. Ross on this board. You can look to Mr. Ross and you can say to Mr. Ross, as the leader whom he respects, you can say to him, "Mr. Ross, for the sake of the 3 million visitors to this lake and the people of the county, having heard the people speak, you can say to Mr. Ross, 'Mr. Ross, would you please agree to step down from this committee?'" You can do that, that doesn't take an agenda item. And so you have a choice too, Mr. Chairman. You can side with these people, you can side with the dive team, you can side with 3 million visitors to the lake, or you can side with your friendship to Mr. Ross at the expense of all of the rest of those things. I don't think you want to do that. And to the board, I would say, you have the same option. I think you all understand what the right choice here is, and it's not sacrificing 3 million people, the people of the county and the dive team. I ask you collectively now, all of you speak, please, to your chairman, telling your chairman, "Mr. Chairman, we ask you collectively as a board that it is the right thing to do to ask Mr. Ross to, please step down now." You choose the people, you choose the 3 million visitors, you choose the dive team. If you spoke with one voice now to Mr. Chairman, if you spoke to him collectively with that opinion, I believe wholeheartedly that he would follow that recommendation through you and this issue would be done right now. Please, all of you speak.
Come on, board. Mr. Orman?
Will you ask him, Mr. Orman? Will you ask him to resign?
Um, so, Kelly Behringer-Tomville, um, when Mr. Ross responded earlier to Austin's comments, you made a comment that as long as he stayed as the leader of this group, then that resolution was in place. Does that mean that now that they have officially resigned, tendered their resignation, that if something were to happen that they came back, that this resolution is null and void? No, I just want to know. I, I don't know if you accidentally said something that you didn't intend, I'm asking.
I did not accidentally say anything I didn't intend, I chose my words very carefully. I begged the commander to remain intact because if we had one thread. Where that leaves it.
Is the resolution as it's written right now null and void based on their resignation?
As you spoke.
Because that was the, that was the reason that I got from what you said, so I'm just asking for clarification.
We have a resolution to, to establish a dive team. I know, people won't be quiet.
Let, let me ask, I'd put in here, what was your response, Sonny?
We have a resolution that forms.
The people are talking over you, but you're not saying what they want to hear.
No.
I quit.
Is it so?
I mean, really, everybody in here wants to hear.
That's what all of us want. And when I quit one thing, when will you be happy?
Right now.
If you want to discuss bully tactics and bully mentality.
Like what you've been doing, like you've been doing all these weeks? That kind of bully tactics?
Yeah, look at the text, he's hit Austin.
See, I'll come back at you.
They can't see me any better now. I just want to know, all of you watched that group of men come to each other's support. I've not seen one of you or heard one of you support him. So why are you not supporting him if he's this great guy and he didn't make?
So why are you not supporting him if he's this great guy and he didn't make any wrong decisions? But he's treating this whole thing like it's his personal agenda. And he's not setting a good example for this young lady sitting here that looks up to him. But, think about it, think about it.
I am thinking about it.
Yes, think about the good in this community.
Look, she's running. She's scared of you.
And you can't call her, go call a private meeting and discuss it. And then have a meeting.
Resign. Resign.
We have public body comment, public body comment is just that, it is the time for the public to comment. In that period of time, we take that and come back.
Your power. That's what a leader gets.
And is that how government works in an ultimate of a-
You can be a leader and some days they go to the-
Side with the table.
I'm just saying, I would have spoke sooner, I ain't gonna stand behind Sonny.
I work Sonny hand in hand on multiple issues. He puts it- He does all of that. And the dive team can talk about being a family and they are, and nobody wanted to see them walk out tonight. This board went into executive session to put something together to resolve the issue, to give another sixty days for the proper SOPs and SOGs and-
Wait, you're calling yourself?
For his faith to be questioned tonight, I think is sad, I don't think anybody in this room has the right to question the faith of anybody else. I think that's inappropriate. There are things that Sonny could have gone back and forth, tit for tat, in the open with Austin, that is not the appropriate way to handle it. He went to Austin. You've heard one side of the story, there's always a Paul Harvey. There were multiple conversations that were had with the state attorney, the state's attorney is the- The state's attorney is the legal counsel for this board, that is who we turn to when we are in question. There are other members sitting here tonight that were down in courtroom B in exact seven, that- Was done, whether they're gonna speak up and admit it or not, I don't know, but I am. I have Sonny's back, I think he's a good man, I think he's a good father, he served his community as EMT firefighter, he served on dive and rescue previously. And I think the attacks on him are, um, over the top. I support Sonny Ross, so you ask why nobody on that team?
You sat there and kept quiet, so-
There are a lot of members on this board that need to speak up.
I mean, seriously, I won't sleep if I know somebody drowns out there tonight. That's awful, we have nothing. I mean, this is stupid. You let them all just walk out, nobody said a word. I mean, you gotta think about it, how many people are out there right now on the lake? It's not funny, I live right by the lake, I don't like when I see all the emergency things go by, I get panic attacks. Somebody's gonna drown, now I gotta sleep, all of us have to sleep tonight and think, pray to God that nobody drowns tonight or tomorrow morning. And these four guys have to drive, what, an hour and something to get all geared up to get down here and-
They don't have to.
Well, they really don't have to. It's awful, this is just awful, these are people's lives. I wouldn't be able to sleep if I was, I can't, I'm not even gonna be able to sleep and I'm not even on the board. This is just awful.
I was the deputy. I did not have to go in the water, but I chose to, because there's not one deputy in this county that would look and just, well, we're just gonna wait. We didn't know she had any kind of medical condition, she was any kind of danger. I'm not just gonna sit there and watch her in danger behind one of the biggest log jams that's on the river. I took the kayak, I went and got her, I had to get in the water and walk her upriver through a log jam in my duty gear, I did take my vest and my gun, everything and all of it. I was scared shitless, because at that moment I realized I didn't have a life vest on. Kinda wondering what the heck am I doing here? How did I get put in this situation? But like I said, there's not one deputy who- Mr. Ross to sit there and say that he didn't put anybody's lives in danger.
Amen, brother.
So I just have one question. You have to have a resolution, you have to make a motion, new order, draft, or whatever to take him off, but could he have just stepped down?
Sure.
Could he have said, "Yep, that's it, I'm out"? Could he have done that?
They did the other night for the fire committee, they said-
But he chose not to. How much of a stand-up guy he's really, really- He let them all walk out the door and didn't say a damn word, and he could have said, "I'm out. It's all yours, take it and run with it."
Such a good guy.
Makes me proud. But he sat there, he was trapped shut and didn't say anything, when he could have solved the whole thing and just said, "I quit. I don't have to be a part of this, this committee, I'm gonna be a part of another committee and that's fine, go be a part of whatever committee he wants." But nobody here wanted him and he chose to stay. That's all I'm gonna say.
And you as the board, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to speak, but you as the board, why would you want him on that committee? Why would you want him on the board at all?
If a stand-up guy like that, I'm being very sarcastic, but why would you want him on any committee? If he's not willing to stand up for three million people, you've got the board outrage, I mean, the county, you're putting three million people at risk, and why would you want him on any committee? I sure wouldn't have wanted him on my team, I would be out of here. Why, why, who would want him on the team? I wouldn't, I'd be whispering in his ear saying, "Get the hell out of here, buddy. Run as fast as you can, but you're on a team later, you're gonna risk all these people's lives? Sorry, no integrity there. Probably gonna be fired tomorrow.
This is my comment to the ones that agree with Sonny, I'm not gonna point out names, but I know that you have a daughter and you have very small grandchildren. If she goes out on the lake tomorrow with those grandbabies of yours and one of them happened to drown, are you still gonna have Sonny's back?
Thank you.
That's to you, Martha. You have very small children in your family. So you don't give a shit about them.
I've been coming, are you? I've been coming to county board meetings for the last few months and I've been begging for humanity, to show some humanity to people. And I read about the log in your eye and the sawdust last Thursday. I live in Windsor. Why am I coming to these board meetings? Because I've watched humanity be destroyed in my hometown. And it's happening here. You're aware of this. And, and I think that as board members, this, this is one of the hardest things for me to have to do, is to come in here from Windsor, serving on a board where I served for almost five years, I loved it, I loved helping people. But it got so ugly that it, it just, the hatred in politics needs to stop, it needs to stop. And yes, I feel like, you know, I hate when people stand and ask the resignations, because I've been in the position where it was Mr. Ross asking for my resignation. I've been in that position. And it hurts, because in your hearts you care a lot about people, I care about people. I did resign. My health was falling apart and I don't want to see anybody in the same boat. He could have stepped aside from the committee. He didn't need anybody to tell him to, he could have just done it. But he chose not to. And after standing up at my meeting for ten straight months asking for me to, I did, not because Mr. Ross asked me to, but because my health was destroyed. Now, people ask me, if I had to go back and make the same decision again that destroyed my life, and it did, I would say yes, I would make the same decision again. Because leadership is not something I believe he needs to be in, and we acted with a legal advice and everything I watched over five years, over five years. And I don't like to tear anybody down, no one. And I don't want to tear Mr. Ross down. But if you're gonna be in leadership and you don't care about people, you shouldn't be sitting there. Thank you.
I'd just like to reiterate what I said earlier and what Josh just got done saying. Sonny could have taken care of this an hour and fifteen minutes ago and we would still have a dive team. And he chose not to, and it was just a no-brainer, if you're a leader, a man, you assess the situation, sometimes you gotta get out of the way. And he chose not to, he chose to set this, and this all could have been avoided an hour and fifteen minutes ago. And we would have had a-
So, I got a question for clarity, probably answered, maybe I missed it with all the commotion going on, because you cut the tension here. But, you know, with John Kirk's website, we all play keyboard warriors, I'm guilty of it, get called out, I don't care. On the insurance deal, was there or was there not insurance? Now, was it a verbiage? Issue? Because it was an hazard? Is that why they didn't have insurance?
The defense attorney for the insurance company said it is highly arguable that there is no coverage for a dive team.
Okay. And this started when? Back in January?
The insurance or the-
I mean, I know it's getting a lot of head shakes, I know it's an idiot question, but if you just watch what the hell just took place. I'm not gonna say any more than what everybody else has, but I'm just asking.
The development papers, what we just did has never been intact.
Is that you can find?
Installation of the county, the attorneys for the insurance company said there's no correlation and there is arguably no insurance. So that goes with liability insurance and tort immunity. So tort immunity is what protects everybody from being sued individually. That was gone or not recognized, I won't say gone, but it was not recognized, and that is the, what was it, last Tuesday?